We were in executive session to discuss the superintendent evaluation. No action was taken and we expect to go back into executive session. We had so many wonderful things to say about Dr. Banante, we couldn't contain ourselves.
I'm at ease.
So we're not going back into executive session to talk about all the bad stuff. So we're going to go back into executive session after our meeting to continue our discussion. Okay, so the next Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 19th. We will be here on Zoom again, 7:00 PM. I also want to note that although it is Cinco de Mayo, it is also Teacher Appreciation Day. So we wanted to take a moment to thank all of our teachers for their incredible, incredible hard work, for their really taking on this COVID challenge and learning a whole new way of teaching in moments. And leading, leading all of our students and parents and colleagues through that new process, you know, with grace and with compassion and total availability to students and to each other. And it's been a pleasure, as much of a pleasure as it can be, I will say, as a parent, working with our Haldene teachers. And we thank you all for your hard work, for sure. So, thank you. And the Board of Education election, we have a little bit more information here. So we have one seat up for election. That's Peggy Clement's seat is up for reelection. And she's running for reelection, but there's, her seat is up. And so we have learned that the election will be on June 9th. And that anybody who is interested in placing their name on the ballot should reach out to Kathryn Platt to get a form, a petition form. See Platt@HaldeneSchool.org. And that application needs to be in by Monday, May 11th at 5:00 PM. They're waiving, the petition signature requirement has been waived. So I think it's just a brief form that you fill out, making sure that you meet the requirements to run for the school board and then getting it in by May 11th. So we have some, a little bit of clarification in that department. Okay, so we're going to go into Dr. Banante's comments.
Yeah, and Jen, I think we'll have an opportunity probably to talk about
Talk a little more about that.
Budget and the Board of Ed component of that as well. So as we go along here, so it's good to see you all again. Welcome back to this format. And I just want to echo Jen's remarks about it being Teacher Appreciation Week. And one thing I'll just add is, that's been really remarkable is that there's a level, level of, I think for all of our educators, of vulnerability that's really come with, not just learning on the fly, but almost our classrooms are opened up to our homes right now. And I think our teachers have been really responsive to the feedback that's been provided by families, what's working, maybe what's not. And just really, it's admirable, the level of humility in which they've entered into this work. And again, vulnerability that they've exemplified in learning on the go in many ways and continuing to adapt their practices based on what they've observed, what our parents have observed as to what's been most effective over these last eight weeks now. And I know that will continue for the next seven weeks. And it's, it's hard to believe, but when all is said and done, we will have been four, four out of the 10 months of the school year, we will have been in this remote environment. And that's really incredible. And I don't think, we didn't leave March 15th or whenever it was, thinking that we'd be where we are now. We thought it would be a couple of weeks and we'd be back together in some way. And our teachers have really just kept things going for our, not just for our kids, but for our families and our community in many ways. So I again, express my appreciation for them and for the work that's going on and will continue to go on in the weeks to come. So as Jen alluded to, with the governor's latest series of executive orders, we are getting some, some decisions are being made around our school budget process. I, I do have a, I am going to share my screen just because I have a few notes that I put into a PowerPoint to guide us through this next part. So just bear with me here. And I want to make sure I have the right, the right presentation up. Yeah, so just a few updates to get us going here. Let me pull this up. So it's sad, but schools are closed for the remainder of the year. And I think we likely saw this coming, but it's disappointing in some ways for our school community. But at the same time, we understand the importance of ensuring public health and public safety right now. And we're supportive of the governor's decision to close schools for the remainder of that, the academic year. So with that, our continuity of instruction plan will remain in place for the remainder of the school year. But I want to emphasize as well that we're continuing to tweak and modify our practices at a classroom level as we continue to learn about best practices and digital learning. So we anticipate to continue to make some shifts in the coming weeks. We're now working to plan for end of year events at the, each of the individual school levels. Obviously, a major focus is graduation and commencement and what we can and cannot do related to that. So there's some final decisions to be made and communicated over the next couple of weeks regarding that. But we also realize that there's going to be a desire for students to return to school to get their belongings, that there's a lot of stuff that was left at the school. And we facilitated this somewhat on an individual basis over the last few weeks. And, but we want to give all of our kids an opportunity to come back and collect their belongings. And that really puts us in a position to begin, there is an opportunity here to begin with some of the summer work that we had anticipated a bit sooner, which is, is good for us. So we'll, we'll try to see and take advantage of those opportunities as they present. So we're working with Tim, obviously, and our building principals to come up with a schedule for doing that, where we can still honor social distancing practices, but at the same time, allow our kids to come back and get some of their belongings if, if they still have them at the school. And as Jen noted, the school budget vote's going to be June 9th. I'm going to reference a chart in a minute here, just for that, because it will, is relevant to our discussion tonight and some items we need to follow up on. I'm sorry. Just while we also are anticipating end of year needs, we also have to begin planning for the long-term impact that COVID-19 may have on our school community. So we're now in the mode of planning for what we'll call recovery or reentry. So first that will come with that is just reconnecting as a school community. We've talked about it at this, at this table, about the need and anticipated need for intervention and remediation in some way, not just on an academic level, but on a social and emotional level as well. We're also being wary of the potential to have to now go between being physically on campus and also in a remote learning environment at various points next school year. If there were to be a flare-up of COVID-19 in our community, where we're learning from what's going on in other countries now. And we have to be prepared to have a plan for returning to remote learning again at various points. And there is talk, and this is going to be, this is going to be difficult to plan around, but the potential need to maintain social distancing parameters or practices while we're still together on campus. So that, that may be, there may be a need for that in our planning. I don't know the likelihood of us coming back to school on some sort of rotational basis versus just being in a distance learning environment. But we're likely to need to have a plan for that. So that's something that we're beginning to think about and work on now. I don't have any, you know, clear ways we're going to do this to share with you tonight, but it's something that we're incorporating into our planning at an administrative level right now in preparation for next school year. So while we're focused on the end of the year and we're drawing a sense of closure towards this school year, we also have to be positioned into, you know, advanced planning for next school year as well. And that's, that's the nature of our work right now. So we're committed to that. And it's been much of what we've experienced thus far. Every couple of weeks, we realize we have to pivot and give our complete attention to a different element of this. And that's going to continue for the foreseeable future. So one thing I want to just also express is the board's, you know, patience and understanding of this. We've talked through a lot of this over the last eight weeks, and I imagine that we will continue to. But the stability, you know, at the board level has been really helpful to me. In turn, it's been helpful to our administration. And then in turn, I'd like to think that's been helpful to our, to our teachers as well. So one, just chart I want to reference, because I just, that's, is now these matters related to the budget vote. So again, I'm just going to scroll through here. There are several actions now that we have to be prepared to take on a very shortened timeline. And everything from the notice of the annual meeting, this whole matter of facilitating the vote via an absentee ballot process puts a lot now on us at a level of how to coordinate that. Kathryn, who's on and can answer some questions, and Anne and Megan and I have been working on this over the last few days to just kind of process, how are we going to do this and communicate this in accordance with the requirements of the executive order? So just a few things I highlighted for the board to be aware of tonight. And we can drill down into any of this as you desire. But just, we really have to adopt the budget by May 15th. And my recommendation's going to be that we meet next Tuesday, just to do the budget adoption process. That will help us in terms of keeping things somewhat on schedule. We were going to talk about, I know we initially had communicated putting the budget up for adoption this evening. We decided not to because we wanted to wait for those state aid figures through that first measurement period to come in. The reality is, we're going to have to adopt the budget without really having clarity around that first measurement period unless we get things sooner than we anticipate there. And I've talked to other school districts about that. That's just, we're all in the same boat. The second piece here is that we want to have a public hearing on the budget, again, seven to 14 days before the vote, which is going to land somewhere between May 26th and June 2nd. So we're likely, again, to need to have another board meeting just for the public hearing, some, sometime between those two dates. And then we have on June 9th, the acceptance of the absentee ballots. And we will seek to do the count that evening on campus as we normally do, so we can share the results with the community later that evening. So those were the key pieces I wanted to hit on, those three matters. But as you can see, we have a bit of a timeline here that's established for the property tax report card, the mailing of the absentee ballots, other particulars that we're responsible for in the budget development process. And I just want to say, just give incredible appreciation and kudos to Kathryn, who is, you know, going through this for the first time with us in a, in a, at a time with just incredibly significant changes to what is the standard process as we've gone along here. So Kathryn's been a huge help in bringing, putting a process in place that's consistent with what our attorneys have recommended, obviously, after reviewing the executive order.
Can I just ask a question?
Go ahead, yeah, please.
Are we planning, so typically we have election workers that work the polls and then help with, you know, the ballot counting. Are we planning on using election workers to count the absentee ballots? Or would they be staff members, like usual secretarial staff or something?
We've, we haven't made a final decision on this, but we have the option now to use our own staff to do it. And just internally, it may make sense for us to do that. But that being said, we're in, there is another option to have the election workers here. And Kathryn, I know you were working on this today to potentially have machines that we could use to scan the ballots that come in, if we create the ballots in such a way. And if we do so, then it would, we would be required to have some of the election workers here if we're utilizing those machines. Do I have that right, Kathryn? I know I'm going on emails that you and I were exchanging throughout the day today. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, there is some, it's a possibility right now that there's a, there's two difference, there's two scanner machines that they might be able to make available to the Putnam County schools. And if our budget ballots are formed properly, and right now we're working with Phoenix for the possibility of doing the absentee ballot process with us. And Phoenix has the capability to make the ballots in such a way that they would be readable by these scanning machines. So, but that's real new information that we're still trying to figure out exactly how it would work. But that would certainly make the process quicker on June 9th.
And do we have a sense of the cost of, of creating this absentee process and how it differs from the cost of our usual election process? Yeah.
Kathryn, can you give us an overview of what the quotes were for us to utilize Phoenix?
To utilize Phoenix, it was about, they quoted us $2 per packet. So that's every registered voter in the district, eligible voter in the district will receive a packet. So we're still kind of coming up with numbers, but it's $2 for that, plus the postage on top of that. The return mail postage is coming in about $1.40 per returned mail. The way it's looking like it'll work will only be charged for the ones that actually get returned for us. It won't be like there's postage on everything that goes out. But we're working on that process right now, too. And then we also do have to mail the budget postcard, the printing of the budget postcard, which announces the change to everyone in the district. We have a quote for $720 and then postage on top of that. But we don't have final postage numbers yet.
So it's a, it's a significant cost, Jen. It's going to be, you know, in the thousands of dollars, likely north of $10,000 to do this. The benefit of contracting it out is just the time. And Phoenix has done this for other school districts. So they have a high level of familiarity with what is required to do this. And it saves us, you know, in terms of, from a process perspective, some of the angst or the anxiety to make sure that this is being done the right way for our community. But there is, there is a significant cost attached to it compared to previous years. And I think, you know, it's significantly more, I think our cost was minimal. There was a unique thing this year with the voting machine that we were getting into. But that was unique to this year and some things that were going on with the primary. That is not a cost that we've incurred in that way in the past. So if I were to compare what we're doing now to last school year, it's significantly more money.
Okay.
But Anne says we're okay, so we're.
We're great.
Thanks, Anne.
Now, but we're, you know, obviously we're saving in other areas. So it's an unanticipated expense, but you know, it does, this does demonstrate sometimes through the executive order process, how quickly a school can incur a cost within, you know, hours. And this is, that's what's happened now, so.
May I ask a question that I think others might have as well? Kathryn, you mentioned an organization called Phoenix. Is that like a printer? Is that like, it's, so it's a printer with the capabilities of, that, that has a capability to format the ballot so that it can be read by a scanner?
Correct, correct. They, it's one of the services that they provide our election services. It's actually, you know, one of the main things that they do.
Okay, so there, it's actually, it's a specialized printer. It's not just any printer. It's a printer that's specialized for election services, which makes using somebody like that, like super relevant. And I guess they're having to put together a packet that would include the ballot, the envelope to mail the ballot to folks, plus the returned envelope, as well as the postage capabilities for the return. So it's a pretty significant set of materials that's involved.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the budget process? And obviously, we can talk a little more about it at other points in the meeting. But this would conclude my updates on the COVID-19 related issues we've encountered.
So should we, as a group, just say that we're going to add a meeting then on Tuesday, May 12th?
So I would recommend, just the, thank you, Jen, for bringing me back to that. I would recommend we meet next Tuesday to adopt the budget. And we talk through anything tonight, if there's any questions or concerns about what we're putting before. It seemed like things were, we, we had some consensus around putting the administration's recommendation forward, but I would want to talk through that if by chance there were not. So we could, so the administration could readdress anything that we may need to in preparation for Tuesday night.
Okay, so is everybody good with that? I can't see everybody. Can I, give me a nod or something?
Yes.
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 Good, okay. Okay, so 7:00 PM, May 12th.
And Jen, you and I can talk during our regular Friday meeting about the public hearing date and what may make sense. It just that Tuesday may work out fine. It would be the final Tuesday of the month to do it then. But I, we can solidify that as we work together.
Sure, sure.
Okay. Are there any other means by which we should be thinking about communicating about the budget or officially responding to questions? Because since we won't be seeing each other, except maybe avoiding each other on the Nelsonville path now and then, I don't know. How else, what's the best way to be proactive about that?
Yeah, I certainly plan to do the webinars and special budget-related ones and also communicating with our, our key stakeholder groups over the next few weeks once, now that we have some sense of finality around when this vote's going to occur. But I would say it's, it's essential that our community has accurate, updated information. And then as board members, I would recommend, you know, whatever circles you're, happen to be crossing or connecting with, albeit remotely or not, that we, we, we do our best to make sure our community has, you know, accurate information about what the budget process entails. And, and I think this year, I tried to avoid this, but the consequence for, and I'll have some information to share on this next week, that if the budget were not to pass, what the consequence is. Because I don't think we have the flexibility now to do a second vote. So, right? Because consider like all this that we're going through, just to get the absentee ballot process together. We're not in a position to do that a second time. So I just think folks need to be well-informed. And obviously, I'll, I'll work with the newspapers to see if they can put an article together that provides this information. And then, but I think word of mouth goes a long way, especially in our community. That's a good question, Sean. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Then should we plan for a second, another Tuesday? Should we plan on Tuesday meetings from now until?
Yeah, I think we're going to, we already have two, so.
Right, so the one between the 26th and June 2nd?
Yep, I think we're going to meet every Tuesday night now.
Yeah, all right, so we'll just plan on Tuesday nights.
What else do we have to do? Okay, good, Tuesday nights.
All right. So Jen, with that, if I can proceed into the strategic coherence planning report?
Yes, please.
Okay. This, I'll come into this one. So the board really has two documents. And for any community member who, who watches or tunes in at some point, I'm providing the broad overview tonight. But also the, this broad overview is to just highlight or hit the highlights of the 44-page strategic coherence process overview that the board member, that our board members have. So that document will be before the board, assuming tonight goes well, next week for adoption for our coherence planning process. And I think, again, we've, we've hit on this at various points throughout the school year. So I don't mean to, I guess, overemphasize any, any particular component of the coherence planning process, but it was really an important goal that we had for our school district this year was to reset the, reestablish the guiding vision and plan for the foreseeable next few years. I don't think, because we're in this crisis, that it changes anything as it relates to what our goals are for our kids. It may change the context in which we do this work or how we do this work, but the goals that we established through the coherence planning process very much will remain the same. And if anything, it might help us really drill down into that even more, because we're really examining how we're approaching teaching and learning right now. So perhaps we can make the, the best of this. So again, this is a process that we, we really began at the beginning of this school year through working with Jonathan Costa from Advance. The board supported our contract with him through, through the budget development process last year and has had many different points of connection with our community, to the point where in some way, shape or form, hundreds of community members participated in this process. And the, the thought exchange being the primary vehicle for that. And I'm really glad that we were able to utilize tools like that, because not only were they helpful for the coherence planning process, they may be tools that we want to lean on again in the future, just in our work. So tonight's overview, again, will be a bit broad in nature, but we can drill down into any part of this that you choose. And then as a backup, you have the full plan document for your reference that gets into the, the greater details of each phase of this. A reminder that coherence planning is, is different than traditional strategic planning and that we're focused on the highest leverage strategies for, for improving our results with kids. So we're really re-examining the district operation through a very particular lens, which I'll, I'll come to in a moment. And there were several driving questions that led this work. This was the foundation for how we entered into it. How is, how are we measure success for our kids? How do we coordinate a budget? And how is that budget aligned with what we want for our kids? And the experiences we want them to come away with as a part of their lives here at Haldene? And what are the most important tasks that we have to undertake to ensure that all of our systems are aligned? And I'm going to speak to those systems in a minute. So these were, again, these kind of, these questions undergirded this work throughout the course of the school year. We had great representation on our planning committee. We had a balance of external folks, folks who don't work directly with the, in Haldene, if you will, along with our educators who do. And this is just a group photo that we took during one of our planning retreats here and a list of the participants who we had in the coherence planning process. Good balance of K through 12 teachers, good balance of parents who had children at all parts of our school system or had children who had come through, and a good representative group of community members who are supporters of our school, but at the same time, have a vested interest in making sure that our school is continuing to adapt to the community needs and while maintaining that sense of excellence that we have here in the education that we provide for our kids. So this was a four-phase process. And the first phase of the process focused on defining what we're calling the Haldene Essentials. So those are the critical skills and competencies that we want to see all of our students come away with after their 12 or 13, or even four years of Haldene, depending on when our students typically enter our system. We also did a full gap analysis of where we are compared to where we want to be and what gaps exist within our system. We looked at key points of data and also points of reflection from our community to help us examine those gap analyses. And then we prioritized in the short term, which we're defining as the next six to 12 months, what actions we must be prepared to make through, I'll just say, through the first part or the entirety of next school year. Because this has obviously been pushed back a little bit, our launch date, with the current situation that we're, we're managing. But what are the strategies and actions that are at, at the four? So the first piece of this is the redefining the Haldene Essentials, which will really be our guiding. which will really be our guiding light as we examine our work now for the foreseeable future. But I also want to highlight these, this reexamination. We, we kept our mission statement the same. We felt good about that as a school community. So our school mission hasn't changed, but we did redefine our core values as an organization. And core values are really important, because core values are what's evident in our actions on a day-to-day basis. We can examine each of our day, days at a board level on down and really examine our actions as to what, against whether or not they met or embodied the values of our organization. So values are what drive our actions on a day-to-day basis. And I, I think sometimes values have a tendency just to be writing on a wall. And we want to make sure that doesn't happen here, that we're really examining and leading with our values in mind and that we're a values-driven organization. And that's going to be a key shift for us. So I just would ask you to take a moment just to look through these on the, on the screen. And again, I'll, I'll highlight, but part of the, I won't read these, but I want to highlight the, the emphasis for, for some of them. First, we, one of the most important parts of our operation is the point of connection between our community and our kids and our staff. And that's something, that's a value we've talked about even in this distance learning piece. That's something we have to hold on to, that sense of connection that our families come to expect, our kids come to expect and appreciate, and that our staff really appreciates as well. We, we want to make sure that's something that's at the fore. And this is a shared collaborative, community-based responsibility. And that's something I think is really evident right now. I'm working really closely alongside my child's teachers and my children now, more so now than ever. So I think we've, we've really struck the right chord here. The second speaks to inclusivity and providing multiple pathways to success for all of our learners. And then the third is connected to work we had already done and really valued as a school community. There was an incredible effort for several years in our school district on authentic learning tasks and the importance of that for our kids to see their learning as relevant and connected to the real world. And we want that to continue. We don't want to lose sight of the good work we've done in the past, now that we have a new coherence planning process. We want this to honor the good work we've engaged in in the past as we, as we move forward here. And lastly, our, our facilities should be safe, respectful of the environment, and supportive of student learning. That's a key value, especially if we're entertaining any facilities work that goes on. And I know that's something we've talked about over the past months or two years or so. And it's important for us to, to honor that. So the Haldane Essentials, critical thinking, problem-solving and communication. Want our students to have a growth mindset, excuse me, emotional intelligence, to know and understand what that means and to be able to embody that and to understand what it means to be well. Now, many of, several of these are multi-dimensional constructs. And that's something that, as we begin to do work around, what does it mean to be emotionally intelligent? We have to really sit with that and, and examine our, the experiences that our kids have through their experience here. And how does that connect with helping them grow to be emotionally intelligent young adults by the time they, they move on from our system? Again, wellness has several constructs to it. What does it mean to be well socially, emotionally, physically? And then how do our kids experience on our campus through their K-12 experience promote well-being? And again, critical thinking, problem-solving, what does it mean to have strong communication skills? These Haldane Essentials will all now form the basis for an examination of our students' experience K through 12 on our campus. Now, that's a lot of work. We're not going to do this in one fell swoop, one piece at a time, though, as, as we enter into this work over the next few years to begin to make sure that there's a clear sense of purpose in what our students are experiencing here. And I think we could agree that the curriculum for any particular subject area is really vast, can be very broad. But what's most important is that we're ensuring that all of our graduates are walking away being good critical thinkers, good problem-solvers, have strong communication skills, have a growth mindset, are emotionally intelligent and are, and are well. Again, emotionally, physically, and socially, that we've done a fantastic job as, as a school system. And it's not to say the other things that we're not going to be learning or teaching mathematics or ELA or Science and Social Studies, we just should be examining those content areas now through this lens. Bear with me on my transitions, because I'm, I have you all up on my screen, but I'm moving you around depending on the side. So when we look at our systems, you've heard me speak to this. We have systems in our school that are related to goals for learning, how we establish goals for our kids, how we teach towards those goals, how we assess whether or not our students have met those goals. We have a group of supporting systems that we put around our school district, the Board of Education being one of them, our PTA, our school foundation. And then all of this occurs in a context where there are external factors that influence our school. The governor's office right now is no better example of that. That's an external factor that is having a significant influence on our school operation. Now, in a regular school year, that doesn't happen as much as it's been happening over the last eight weeks, obviously. But, but there are a variety of external factors that we have to be wary of as we engage in our work. So these are the, this, this was the basis for the gap analysis that occurred. We examined each of these areas. And we had teams assigned to each to really do a deep dive into how do we do this work? And, and how is it impacting our, our school district? Or how has it impacted our school district? Jen and I were a part of it. Jen and I were a part of the external factor group, where we looked at accountability, SED mandates, local economic factors, such as real estate and the like, development in the area. But we really, each group did a great job of going into a deep dive, whether it be internally or externally, of how our system operates in these areas. Generally, that's just an excellent practice. I think if one positive thing has come out of this work already, and we haven't even, you know, really begun the work yet, we've just begun the planning or completed the planning, it's that we're more aware that these systems exist. And, and just raising that level of awareness among our faculty and staff and our administration or board allows us to, to really ask better questions about our, our school district operation. So these were the five most significant obstacles in our, in our analysis. We need more effective communications with the broader Haldane community and with our families. Now, that's something that's been out there for some time. Quite frankly, when I came into the district, I, I was hearing this. But I think in, we want to just further contextualize this to specifically all, as it relates to how we set goals for learning, how we teach towards those goals, the, what assessments we're making of those learnings. So that, that allows us to take a, a more narrow, or look at this through a more narrow lens that could be a bit more constructive, because it's easy to say, we could always do a better job communicating. You know, to what end, you know, at what point will we have communicated enough? But we want to really enter into this and make sure that we're communicating the elements of this planning well to our community and, and what, what it means for our kids. We have realized that we have a very inconsistent goal-setting process, both in method and methodology, or excuse me, measurement for both adults and students in our district. We don't have a consistent professional learning plan for, for our staff. And that's going to be important as we move forward in this work. There's been some misalignment or inconsistency in curriculum development and implementation in our district. And we also realize that we have more vulnerable populations that we need to consider how we approach our work, specific to subgroups of students as we, as we move forward. And I, I think as I reflect on this particular area of this plan in several ways over the last two years, I've appreciated the discussions that we have had as a, at a, at a board level in these areas. And I think that the coherence planning process will now allow us, again, to take a, a particular line of attack or approach into resolving these areas now. Just want to give an example of some of the goal areas that we are now planning around. And each of these has its own action steps attached to it. And they're listed in the full plan. And I've been, I haven't shared all of them, again, publicly in this way, just because it would take in, in order to amount of time. But they will be there for, well, obviously, they're there for our board, but they'll be there for the community to see once the plan is adopted. But these were the key strategy areas, I should say, that we're going to mobilize around as our, as we move forward in this work. So we first want to create a system that ensures the ongoing development and implementation of vertically and horizontally aligned curriculum, that's aligned with those Haldane Essentials that I spoke of earlier. It's important that we have an updated professional learning plan and that we begin our work as it relates to that. We want to make sure we're giving attention to our goal-setting process. Make sure that the goals we set, that we're setting goals for kids and those goals are based upon, again, our, our beliefs, our, our core mission and those Haldane Essentials. And we want to be deliberate in examining our, in re-examining perhaps our approach to how we do this work with our kids, in particularly those from historically underserved or vulnerable populations. And then the communication piece comes up around. And there's a, there's a level of strategizing that we have to do in communicating all of this to our stakeholders and to our community at large. So when you look in the full planning document, you will see a series of actions as it relates to each of these strategy areas. And sometimes, early on in this work, and Jonathan did a great job with our group in explaining this, that we may, we may really want to sit for the first year and, and focus on, on communication for a bit of time and making sure that we've, we've just communicated this plan well and they raised the level of awareness of the plan amongst our, our larger community. That, that's going to take some time to do that well. And so just for specific strategies, it's important to note, our focus was what needs to happen in the next six to 12 months, not what needs to happen for the next five years. So in some of those, you will see that there's only two or three action steps because, or there may only be one, because we realize that it's going to take six to 12 months just to get that one action step done well. So that's a, that just would explain some of the, some of the differences you would see in, in the number of action steps that are aligned with each of these strategies. So just some short, just some brief next steps that we want to engage in a comprehensive review of the coherence planning process and with the entire Haldane community. We had a, we had planned the first review with our faculty and staff. We had a, a great day planned for faculty and staff, but it landed on the Friday before, which ended up being our last day of school that we were in together. So we had to, obviously, with everything going on, we had to put that plan on hold so we could prepare our staff for what was looking like the anticipation of a school closure. And I, quite frankly, we were lucky, we, we did that. That was a good decision on the part of our leadership team. But I'm really looking into entering, entering into this work next year with what I would call as more of a task force approach for each of those focus areas. So if we were just go back to, to those five strategies of, of, it's a good opportunity now to engage further internal community members and also external community members to create a, a level of responsibility and accountability for overseeing the planning that's going on for each of these areas. So we have five areas, so there will be five teams. And those teams will be really charged with monitoring our progress along each of these action, action items and plans, and also reporting back to me what op, what success we've had, what obstacles we're encountering, what budget implications may need to be considered for our planning for the following school year. And that's how we create a clear line of sight between making sure the work gets done, but also making sure that when we're having conversations at a board level about school budget, that we know we're budgeting for our coherence plan every year, that we're budgeting to make sure that we've first addressed the work that needs to go as it relates to the Haldane Essentials, as it relates to our coherence planning process, that we funded our mission before we get into anything else through the budget process. So that's a, the task force approach is generally a good one to make sure that, again, we're, we're holding ourselves accountable for getting this work done. And it's getting done in the way in which it was intended. Again, we, we used an example once. We want to be wary of, just at the end of the year, listing all of the activities that we did and fitting those activities into, into the work that we had set out to do. We want to be intentional with the work we're doing and making sure, again, there's a clear connection between this work and our Board of Education and our budget process. So just this third and fourth bullet, each of those teams will be responsible for coordinating the completion of the action steps and reassessing the action plan every six to 12 months. So stuff comes up, right? We're, we're living the best example of that, that sometimes you can have the best laid plan, but life happens and you have to adjust and adapt and reassess where you are. But you have to stay focused on where you're going. So these teams will reassess the action plan every six to 12 months and then re-coordinate the next series of action steps. We may find we get held up on an item or two, it takes us longer, or we may find we're able to accelerate through some of these actions quite readily. We don't know, we'll see how it goes. But we have to have a process in place for continuing to reassess the plan and what's needed to help all of our students, again, meet those Haldane Essentials. So I think we'll have a good process in place that will make sense to the people who participate in it and that the board will come to expect and rely upon as it relates to our work for our kids each year. And then, and then there'll be a process, again, for, for that work filtering up to, to me, into the Board of Education. So again, I know we, we've talked about this several points throughout the year. This was meant to be a very broad overview to bring this work to closure. I'm really proud of every member who was a, a part of the coherence planning process. Folks put a lot of time and energy, hours and hours of work in each, into each of these areas. And I think we have a really quality product. If you have the time to read through the coherence plan for what we're, for bringing a real, a level of intention to the work that we're trying to do and to create and the experience we're trying to create for our students. So I know some of our, the members who are engaged in the process are, are here, obviously, or they're listening in. And I just want to, again, extend my appreciation to all of them for their work and their continued work in, in helping us reset this course for our, our kids for, for next school year. And with that, that's the end of this presentation. I'll bring us back out of stop share, there we go, and answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I mean, it's a, I, I'm thrilled to see how the next steps are taken and also quite confident that it's such a comprehensive, yet very elegantly and clearly articulated series of values and actions. You know, I mean, that it's so comprehensive, but it also so specific is very impressive. And it also, given that we're in a moment of, as you said, great change, there's a tremendous opportunity that we find ourselves in a way to be poised in a place of reflection to begin thinking, you know, which values this year suddenly become the most important for us to focus on? Like you, you mentioned remediation and intervention, for instance, across the student population. You can see how we're going to start the year and we're going to know that there's going to be some portion of the year that's dedicated to wellness and emotional intelligence and that, that we plan for that. And that's part of, you know, we can put assessment tools in place to figure out the best way to move forward with those things as a priority until we, and that is a wonderful opportunity for us, it seems, to have those key conversations, to be communicating to everyone in, in the area about how this tool is helping facilitate that. So it's, it's very clear and I'm very excited about it.
Great. Thanks, thank you, Sean.
Definitely want to appreciate all the work that went into this. It's just reading through the full document was a lot. And I also appreciate the, the very specific tasks that are assigned to, that are detailed with names, with owner names, which is great, which is always a nice thing you can see at the end of the year. One of the things that I'm also interested in really seeing over time is really seeing over time is how this ends up, how the actions that are taking in each of the categories and the coherence plan end up making a measurable impact on the student performance and outcomes and you, and that's, that's an ongoing, of ongoing interest to me. So I'm looking forward to, to understanding that piece a little bit more.
John, you've, I think since day one, we've had this good conversation about how will we know, or how do we know when this is occurring? And I think that's something that obviously is embedded into the coherence planning processes, again, that measures for a learning piece. It's not just measuring test scores, also measuring habits of mind. And how do we do that? And that's a, that's a legitimate question that we have to consider as we begin to engage in this work.
So, thank you.
Well, I'll just share that it was a really exciting process and honor, and honor to be a part of. And there's, there's just so much collective energy and expertise, like if in the rooms, you know, these 18 people, these leaders of our district and of our community, I mean, they're really, everybody is so excited to get started. And it, it's unfortunate that our momentum has been, been halted, but I think like Sean said, you know, where's the silver lining here? Is this actually an opportunity to start fresh in some ways, right? The dust has been kicked up quite literally and, and where do we want it to settle? So I, I, I'm looking forward to, to seeing what, what happens.
Um, all very exciting. I mean, it's all, there's, there's so much in here that I really appreciate, you know, some of the things that stick out or, and I don't know if I'll be saying this right, but you know, really emphasizing like the, the key core instructional practices that, you know, that are high leverage. You know, the recognition of, of really wanting to meet the needs of all learners and address the whole child. So in some ways, one of the things I'm struck by as I worked around my head around this is in some ways, I think that the, the intention was, and I think the result is to really consolidate down to these key core goals and, and not using all the, you know, principles and strategies, et cetera. And yet at the same time, it's still because education is such a complex endeavor. That's complex because we're addressing so many different needs of kids and there's so many different stakeholders and there's where we are and there's where we want to go and there's how we want to get there. I think it'll be really important to come up with a key set of, 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 of figures or images that really helps scaffold the community's understanding of this multifaceted process, right? So what are the essentials? What are the obstacles that we're, you know, addressing? What are the, and I'm not even sure I'm picking this out, but like really to really get buying, because the community cares, the community wants to know, the community wants to understand. And I think it's really important for those of us that think about it every day or think about it almost every day to recognize that this is, these are concepts that are novel to people. They're not impossible to grasp, but they're novel. And what can the district do not just to share the information, but to scaffold people's understanding and be really prepared to answer questions because it's, it, it's, 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 it is really truly very multifaceted and, and, and what's again ironic is that it, this process is also really an intentional change in direction from being hugely compreh- comprehensive in the same way that our last strategic plan was. So that's the thing that I want us to be mindful of and yeah, how to take advantage of, you know, maybe like even to test some of these out, like do a little user testing. You know, you had, I mean, and, and the folks that were part of the, of the, of the process aren't really the, the best consumers for this because they're new, but who are some of our, our parents that represent possibly different demographics that we could, you know, like even just do like, like three, like little draft presentations to, to, to really, and to really acknowledge that, that it is, it, there is complexity there and, and that we are very, and, and that we're, we accept and embrace the idea that it will take some time for people to become fluent in this language and that fluency is something that we really want for the community. I hear, can you, that we really want for the community, we want folks but understood and bought in. And so that really has to be just a real drive, I think.
That was definitely something that was spoken about at the committee meetings as well, like how, how to brand this? How to communicate it, how to get those six Howdane Essentials as something that everybody just knows, you know? And what comes to my mind is Dr. Silke's true blue acronym. Yeah, right. I mean, it's just so brilliant that they, everybody knows what that means. It's this thing, it's this motto, it's everywhere you go, it's, it's the Nike swoosh, you know, it's like, how can we do that for our strategic coherence plan?
Right, right, right.
So this document will live somewhere after we approve it. It's not currently. I guess anybody could see it now through board docs, right?
Correct. So this is posted on, on board docs and, and every presentation we give, we also put, we have a tab on our website for the coherence planning process. So everything lives there and we'll continue to. So we'll probably archive after we moved through adopting the plan, we'll probably archive some of the old presentations there. And that's where the action or task force teams, whatever we want to brand them as, their work will be public as well. I think that, that transparency is really important because it, as we move forward where it's prominent in our, in our district, not just physically in our buildings, but also on our web, website. So anybody who wants to learn more has the ability to.
Great.
And I don't think it is the, the, I don't think the document is on board docs yet unless I'm not looking.
Jen, when you say document, do you mean the presentation tonight or the actual coherence plan?
The, oh, well, I was thinking about your presentation tonight, but also the strategic coherence plan, I guess, as well.
Both will, we can easily put both in.
I just wanted to make sure if folks were looking for them, that, that we will, will make them available, not that they were, that, that they are.
Thank you. I wasn't being clear. Great. Okay. So that will be, if anyone has follow-up questions, if the board has follow-up questions for Dr. Benante, send them along and then at our next meeting, it will, I guess our next meeting, it will be up for adoption.
Yeah, and I'll do that at the, the next regularly scheduled meeting, not next week's meeting that we're likely to have. So we'll put it on for the 19th, thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay. So we're going to move on, communication from the public. So if there's anybody listening in that would like to ask a question or leave a comment, you can do that via the chat feature and we will address them at our next communication from the public section later in the meeting. So chat away. And we go into our information reports. These are here for everyone to review. And now I'm at letter G consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
These are our minutes from the April 21st business meeting. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? We thank Ms. Champlin for her service to the district, wish her well in her next adventure. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going into unfinished business. So this is the, a policy review, this is our second reading. And if there are no questions at this meeting, we can off it. So I will ask this. Is there? So Catherine, is there a recommended action here for you to read? I don't see one. Do you want me just to, do I just open it?
Not for the policy review, I don't.
Not for the policy review. So here we are in our policy review. Any further thoughts? Is everybody feeling comfortable with it? This is our data privacy. Yeah. So does everyone feel comfortable? Are we ready to go through with approval tonight? Or does anyone need another meeting? Are we good? Okay. So do I just make a motion to approve it? Okay. So I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve the policy. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any further thoughts or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, sorry, I was looking for a process.
Just as a question, we had that situation from beginning of this year, beginning of last year with a third party from a number of years ago before your tenure. Dr. Benante, that there were records, I forget the details of the specifics.
Oh, yeah.
Would this policy change anything? And I'm going to ask this and you can say, I have no idea because I haven't thought about it. But would this policy change any, anything in, in the way that we would work with parties like that? Would the same process have happened and it's just like they lost the data, that's their responsibility? Or is there any incremental controls in place that?
Not knowing the specifics of how we engage that group at the time, I would say moving forward, no, because this, this ensures that when we engage with an entity like that one, and that was, um, we were using a, a group for student benchmarking, academic benchmarking, similar to the NWA. And this policy requires how the, the entity to, it limits what they're able to do with the data that they obtain in, from, from us or from our kids in, in implement, in whatever that would, in, in whatever it would entail. I, I guess I shouldn't speak too specific to like that group. So moving, it, it wouldn't have wanted, John. So the issue with, that we ran into the summer is that there was a data breach at that entity. So this policy wouldn't prevent a data breach from happening necessarily, but it would impact the, the data that the company can store and, and have about our kids.
Well, and a really important, so I am unusually familiar with it because I had to read it for, because I had to understand the law for work, is it will have impacts in that it will quite likely really limit what types of digital tools the district uses moving forward. I anticipate that there would be greater oversight in what tools the district allows teachers to sign up for and that there will be a process for ensuring that those tools can meet what are literally health typically, like, like, like it's, it's, it's the standard that the, that the federal government developed for health data, like it is a really, really stringent law, this law. So for example, it requires that any organization that we contract with, whether it's a free, you know, free service or whatever, they have to promise that all personally identifiable student data is encrypted, not just at rest, so wherever it's stored, but in motion as well, right? So it is really, it, it, and I, I know Phil knows this, I mean, again, is working on it because we've talked about it, is it will require an audit, right? Like, so I, I guess, I mean, maybe it's not my role to have jumped in here, but I think it's, it, the, the law is, the, the law, which this policy is based on, is designed to prevent those kinds of things from happening.
And I mean, I think I'm right. My, my understanding too is that those sort of online sort of apps and websites that teachers might be using with parents that are opt-in only, are they excused from this law if it's you can or can't participate or do things like homeroom or dode, class dojo, which I know is used in elementary school, are those eliminated as possibilities or as interfaces?
They, they all have to be reviewed.
Right.
And I think the beginning date is July 1 for this law. And that's something that behind the scenes, Leah and Judy Barbera have been very active in collating all of the resources that are being, currently being utilized and examining whether or not they meet the criteria. But the ones you just described, Sean, you bring up a good point there, you know, and I see it in my own home where a teacher may see, know through, again, all well intentioned, but may see a particular app or a new app that they thought, I think, is really engaging or may be fun for the kids to engage within. We really have to be wary of just now setting that in motion without first having a process for that to be reviewed and approved prior to the teacher signing the kids up or the classroom up for it. So all of that is, is in the process of being reviewed. We're familiar with some of the, the bigger, more prominent ones, if you will, but, but there's, there's dozens out there.
Thank you. It's useful.
It's an important law. It's, it's, it's good and it's a good policy for us to have. It's great that this is happening and I, I really commend Dr. Benante and, you know, Ms. Horn and, and Barbara for really jumping on this, like, you know, right away. Especially when there's so much else going on.
Okay, we're going to go into new business. Number one, approval of the CSC CPSC placement recommendations, Ms. Plant.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
To the approval of the supplemental memorandum of agreement between the school board and the CSE.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the supplemental memorandum of agreement between the Howdane Board of Education and the Civil Service Employees Association dated May 5th, 2020, related to the payment of hourly employees during the pendency of the COVID-19 pandemic state of emergency and authorizes the superintendent to sign the agreement on behalf of the district.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Benante, do you want to speak to this?
I do. Thank you, Jen. So this is an action item that's been before the board. I think this is the third or fourth time regarding the payment of hourly employees. And we were really at a point at the end of April to examine whether or not we were going to continue with this and begin to work with our employees to connect them with the benefit, the other benefits that may be available to them through unemployment. And did a comprehensive analysis of that. And we were prepared to begin engaging our hourly employees in a discussion about that we were going to stop with this payment and that they should begin to seek the other benefits in which they may be eligible for. Upon review, because the one, one of the positive things that's come out of this crisis is I'm, you know, probably connecting now more with other school districts than ever before. So as I was discussing this with other regional superintendents, one of them made me aware of that. They were, well, all of them in some way were, are doing this, but one of them was also exploring making this shift and, but was advised that we, they could not because embedded in one of the governor's executive orders, and this is going back to one of the initial ones, that if we have any, as public institutions, if we have any public, or if we have any part-time employees, we're supposed to keep, keep them employed. I verified this with Mr. Lambert, Mr. Lambert agreed. So even if we are inclined to, despite our inclination to now reexamine this by law or by executive order, we are required to keep our part-time or hourly workers, I should say, on, on the rolls for the duration of this crisis.
So when's the So when's the end date? You know, it says that during the pendency of the pandemic, is, is it when the state of emergency ends? Is it when we go back to school? Because I could see that being an issue in the future if there's no, nothing definitive.
Well, we could always, so the way we're entering into this for now is that it would be for the duration of the school year, because that, schools are closed for the remainder of the year.
Okay, but it doesn't say that.
No. We, we wanted to get into, we tried to frame the language in a way where we would not have to continue to keep putting this before the board for action. However, we can bring something back to the board for action if there's a change in the law or a change in the executive order. So at that point, we would bring an updated resolution if we felt that there was a need to, or the ability to discontinue doing so. But by executive order, this is, this is what we were supposed to be doing under, as long as schools are closed.
So, understood that that's how long we're supposed to do it, but is that how it's worded? So it's saying that during the pendency of the pandemic, of the pandemic state of emergency, which is going to end first? The state of emergency or the schools opening? Could we get caught in something weird there?
I don't believe so. I, I think that we have the ability that if we need to come back and, and by resolution, or by another supplemental agreement, that we would have the ability to do that, if we were concerned about the duration of this. It's not the spirit of how, again, the, how we've discussed this with the labor group.
Right.
So we're, between us and the labor group, our understanding is that for the duration of this school year, that our hourly employees will continue to be paid, and that we're, obviously, that's what this resolution speaks to. I think, though, Margaret, you're, the second part of your question, you know, which will end first, it's a good question, but I think that, you know, the governor's hitting, we, I don't know how that's, I don't know how that's going to work, because now we're talking about potentially certain regions of the state opening before others. Well, are we still in a state of emergency if one region's open and another is not? So, you know, I, I don't, I don't know.
And then where do our budget numbers go? You know, are we still required, if, if the northern areas are allowed to open up, and we're not allowed to open up, are, are we required to keep them on? Are they, you know?
Right. That, that has not been determined yet.
Right.
And again, the, the executive order states, we're supposed to keep them on for the duration or through this, through the state of emergency. That was one of the initial, but it was tied to the school closure.
Right.
So for the time being, and for sake of just tonight, both us and the labor group are under the impression in an agreement that this was, this is for the remainder of the school year, to be reevaluated at the conclusion of the school year. Or at the start of next school year, I should say, because our hourlies do not work through the summer.
So at the end of June, we stop paying them because it wouldn't fall under the executive order, and we start paying them again in the fall. So we have to look at it as a budget item, but presumably, hopefully, fingers crossed, by the fall, we're all sorted out anyway.
Correct. And remember, they're budgeted for, and they'll be, they're budgeted for next school year as well, because we don't, we didn't anticipate, obviously, being in this situation this year. So we've budgeted through the school year to be paying these employees. And going into next school year, again, we were budgeting based on anticipating being in regular session. So it's budgeted for next school year as well. What could change is a law, or there could be another executive order that would allow us greater flexibility or discretion in this. But right now, we don't have that.
Right. You.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number three, the approval of the SMOA with the school board and the CSEA.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the supplemental memorandum of agreement between the Howden Board of Education and the Civil Service Employees Association dated May 5, 2020, related to changes to the payment of overtime during the pendency of the COVID-19 pandemic state of emergency, and authorizes the superintendent to sign the agreement on behalf of the district.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Jen, if I may? Just so for clarity, for anybody who may be watching or listening in, there is a clause in our contract, or the CSEA contract, that speaks to the payment of overtime when employees come in during states of emergency. I believe it's, it's acknowledged, and the CSEA certainly worked with us on this, that that language was created and applies to weather-related emergencies that have occurred. So typically, your, your snowstorm that comes through, and employees have to come in and, and work, they receive time and a half for that. However, the language doesn't say, "snow days only." So we're, we're in a state of emergency right now. So this actually created the condition where we were required to make overtime payments for the employees who we have been rotating in to maintain the buildings and the grounds. As soon as we caught it, we brought it to the attention of the CSEA. They were, they worked with us through this. Obviously, since it's a labor issue, there's a bit of back and forth. It takes a little while to work through it, but, but I do want to just express my gratitude for their readiness and willingness to do so over the last couple of weeks, and to try to inform their members. Obviously, it's not easy for them either to get all of their, to connect with all of the members in this remote environment. But their leadership did so, and tried to expedite this as, as best they could to, to get it before the board this evening.
Okay, any further questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And number four, the approval to adopt our long-range planning study.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby adopts the 2019-2020 Comprehensive Long-Range Planning Study: Demographic Enrollment and Facilities Analysis, conducted by the Western Suffolk Bosse's Office of School Planning and Research.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? As a reminder, this was presented at our last board meeting. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Number five, revenue anticipation notes. Catherine, please, don't feel like you need to read all of that. You can.
I'm going to stop that. Absolutely. And just so you know, this does require a roll call vote.
Thank you.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby delegates to the President of the Board of Education the power to authorize the issuance of and to sell revenue anticipation notes of the Howden Central School District in anticipation of the receipt of revenues from certain sources during each of the fiscal years of said school district commencing July 1, 2019, and July 2, 2020.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Benante, will you speak to this a bit?
Actually, thank Anne, if that's okay.
Yes, Ms. Dina.
Yep.
Sure. This really pertains to state aid and the uncertainty of our payment schedule. Right now, we don't have a cash flow problem. But if state aid payments are withheld from us for perhaps lack of funds on the state level, or just because they decide to change the, the payment schedule to us, this could potentially affect us really next spring, when we might run out of a tax revenue, and we're waiting for state aid revenue to come in. This allows us to do a short-term borrowing while the revenue that we anticipate comes in. Cleverly called the revenue anticipation note. But it's better to have and not need than need and not have. I don't see, you know, I'm not worried that we're going to have to issue them. But again, you never know with the uncertainty.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Roll call. Sorry.
Thank you.
President Daley?
Yes.
Vice President Headland?
Yes.
Trustee Clements?
Yes.
Trustee McNell?
Yes.
Trustee Par? Trustee?
Yes. Yes. My internet keeps going in and out. I'm trying to chat.
She's really thinking about it.
That was dramatic. It was like, is she going to say yes? Is she not?
No, no.
I was on the edge.
It keeps going in and out, and you guys keep freezing. And I have to tell you, it is kind of funny to see where your faces freeze, like those last things. But, but then it keeps dropping out. And I was actually typing, my internet is going in and out. I don't know why. Phil is completely gone right now.
Oh, no.
Wow.
He is there.
I am here.
I do not see Phil. Jen, your face is frozen.
Okay, so that was a yes from Margaret. All right, moving on to the next one. Very good. Thank you. The Westchester Putnam School Boards Association, Slate of Officers and Directors.
And can I just ask you to ask the board if they believe that they'll be approving this, so I know which resolution to?
Oh, yes. Good. Does everybody want to give a yea or a nay? Are you feeling comfortable? I'm seeing nods. I think we're going to approve it.
Okay. Then be it resolved that the Board of Education casts a yes vote for the 2020-2021 Westchester Putnam School Boards Association Nominating Committee, Slate of Officers and Directors, and a yes vote to ratify the 2020-2021 Westchester Putnam School Boards Association budget.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? There, they'll be having their annual meeting virtually this year, that I will, it won't be as nice as the one that we went to last year, Margaret, but I will attend on our behalf. There does need to be somebody from each school district there to vote. Okay, any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. The approval of the intermunicipal agreement. Ms. Platt?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the intermunicipal agreement between the County of Putnam Bureau of Emergency Services and the Howden Central School District for facilities use for shelter or comfort stations in the event of a publicly declared emergency in the county, and authorizes the President of the Board of Education to sign the agreement on behalf of the district.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Benante, do you want to speak to this a bit?
Yeah, this should have come before the board earlier this school year, and I just think it was lost in, in the shuffle, if you will, in our district. So this stems from a meeting I attended earlier this school year on our emergency response, our countywide emergency response, in the event of an issue at the Indian Point Power Plant. So part of our, and just not to get too far into specifics, because it's, it's emergency response thing, but part of our, of the countywide emergency response plan in the event of a nuclear issue is to coordinate the evacuation of our schools and townships, but also utilizing our, potentially our schools to house individuals as part of the, the emergency response procedure. So this agreement provides the flexibility in such a situation for the county to access and utilize our school facility. And every county, or I'm sorry, every school district in the county is engaging in this agreement, or has engaged in this agreement with, with Putnam.
Okay, any further questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Catherine, this does say it needs to get signed by me. Is that something?
Aye.
I don't know if it's time-sensitive. I mean, I don't know, we can talk about it offline.
Okay.
But let me know how you'd like that signature.
Okay.
Given to you.
Thank you.
Okay, number eight, our rescheduling of our annual meeting.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the change to the annual district meeting budget vote and trustee election from May 19, 2020, to the uniform voting date of June 9, 2020, based on New York State Executive Order 202.26 regarding school board elections and budget votes.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wow, that was a lot. I don't know, Catherine, you're probably exhausted. I'm exhausted after this. Okay, communication from the public. I don't think we have any chats. Did anybody see any? Did I miss any?
No, there's none.
Going into board reflections, does anyone have anything they'd like to share?
No, except we worked on dividing by fractions today. So that was a good stroll down memory link.
I've been doing some common denominators myself.
There we go. It's all good.
And everybody's doing fractions. We did, too.
Fraction time.
We're doing shapes in my house.
There we go. I like that.
Okay, Dr. Benante, anything to share?
I don't have anything to share. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm going to, so I'm going to make a motion for us to go back into executive session. And that also means I need to create a new Zoom meeting, and then email you guys the information. So.
Can we just go back to the other one?
Technically, we could.
I ended the meeting, though.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah. So I'm going to create a new one. So just check your email. So we'll probably like reconvene in, you know, two minutes instead of like one. So I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the superintendent evaluation. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There will be no action taken, and we will not be coming back. So, Dr. Benante, we say good night, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Anne.
Okay.
Good night.